I took the bitch, I knew you, baby You sold me lies just by the way you look Taught me a language that I never speak Baby, that ain't for me, that, that ain't for me I dug my grave watching you where you move You took me higher than I ever flew Too many times gave you a second chance Baby, I'm just a man, I'm, I'm just a man No for thinking about you late night No for running around with your friends now They're picking the pieces of my soul up out the floor I said I would die for you, baby But I can't take this pain no more I thought I was willing, but tonight I saved my life When I showed you the door I don't wanna lose you, baby But I can't play this game no more I thought it would kill me, but tonight I saved my life When I showed you
It's 9pm on a fucking Friday Get the fuck, fuck, get the fuck It's 9pm on a fucking Friday Get the fuck We're going to high, let's go Let's go Let's go Let's go Going to high, let's go Go, 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 let's go It's 9pm on a fucking Friday It's 9pm on a fucking Friday Get the fuck, fuck, get the fuck It's 9pm on a fucking Friday It's 9pm on a fucking Friday Get the fuck Up, we're going to high, let's go Let's go Let's go Let's go Going to high, let's go Go, 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 let's go Get the fuck, let's go
Start up this show now Give yourself to me Can I 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 turn on the music 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 Can I Can I Can I Can I Can I turn on the music 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 Can I Can I Can I Can I Can I Don't you want some more? Can I It's not a perfect love Can I Don't you want some more? Can I It's not a perfect love Can I Don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? Don't you want some more? Don't you want some more? Don't, 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 don't 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 Don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love Don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? Don't you want some more? Don't you want some more? Don't, 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 don't 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 Some more It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love But don't you want some more? It's not a perfect love You got the common lip set 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 Woo!
That's what we do, we go hard all night So we're here for having a good time Good time Good time Oh, we got the bottom side of the VIP section That's what we do, we go hard all night Good time 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 Good time
I don't know if it's right I don't know if it's right I don't know if it's right I don't know if it's right, 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 right I don't know if it's 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 right, 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 right Let the groove be your guide Feel the freedom to fly Shake it round and let it fly Let it loose and enjoy the ride Each morning when I see your face I truly believe this is the place I'm supposed to be 'Cause you love me Give me reason to come straight home From your loving I can never roam 'Cause you love me You really love me I'm loving The way you love me, baby, yeah, yeah The way you kiss me And hug me each morning I'm loving The way you kiss me And hug me each morning I'm loving You know I'm loving, loving Tried this love thing a time or two Never felt what I feel for you And you love me I love you and you love me, love me Make me dinner and you make me smile Strong way gonna take care of my child and me You do this cause you love me, love me, love me baby Oh, 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 oh Love me, love me, love me baby Oh, 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 oh I love the way I Said I love the way I love the way you love me hey Oh, 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 oh I'm loving, loving You came to me when I needed love You were a gift from God and you showed me what, what love is Showed me what love is You've been better than me than I've been myself I don't want love from no one else but you See all I want is you You complete me I'm the man I'm supposed to be Because of you I'm me because of you, because of you I'm loving, I'm loving Every little thing you do makes me running all the way
Problems they come And it seems to think I've gone My mental is not there But I know that I must be strong Still I feel that I could break down And cry for many days Try to deal with these problems anyway Yes, sir Waiting for some answers And looking for solutions Been deciding which way to turn, which way till time Tired of these feelings Hoping for it to get better Knowing life is lessons learned hey yeah You know that you'll be better, oh Even though your hands are So the rain will fall But through it all, there will be some brighter days Satisfaction always Deep in this joy, yeah The trouble don't last Always, always, always When it rains, yeah Let it fall, yeah, 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 yeah Let it fall, yeah, yeah, yeah Let it fall When it rains, yeah Let it fall, oh, 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 oh Yeah, let it fall, yeah, 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 yeah Let it fall, yeah, yeah, yeah Let it fall So when it rains, show it all But you got to let it fall Let it fall, let it fall on me Said I got the rain on me, it needs to rain on me Let it rain on me, let it rain on me Let the rain just fall on me Let it rain on me, let it rain on me Let the rain just fall on me Let it rain on me, let it rain on me Let the rain just fall on me See when it pours, let it fall, let it fall on me, yeah
Same old story back again She's not a lover, she's just a friend Sick and tired, oh, to blame on me Now you think it's funny Now you wanna spend your money On girls but you forgot when you were down That I was around I can't sleep, I can't sleep anymore Wait a while, I walk through the door I wish, I didn't miss you anymore, anymore I can't sleep, I can't sleep anymore Wait a while, I walk through the door I wish, I didn't miss you anymore, anymore My lover can't call again What in the world is happening? Listen to me, but don't yell at me Isn't it ironic? All you wanna do is smoke chronic Boy, you forgot when you were down That I was around Oh, I can't sleep, I can't sleep anymore Wait a while, I walk through the door I wish, I wish, I wish, I wish I didn't miss you, yeah, yeah Remember the way the life people do Sick of forever giving you Wish you'd bring back the man who was good to me Oh, every time you say you're coming Boy, you disappoint me, honey How were you forgot when you were down That I was around, oh I can't eat, I can't live, I can't miss you anymore, oh, yeah
Puerto Rico, Panama, Venezuela, Peru, Cuba, Colombia, Honduras, Ecuador Puerto Rico, Panama, Venezuela, Peru, Cuba
He turned the stars they said that you belong to me. We got love to go. It's not over between you and me. It's not over. I don't wanna, I don't wanna sing free.
Pobre tierra dormida, duramente abatida por la luz del sol. Por ahí cruces. Para verte a ti. Nada fue la distancia con mi loca esperanza de volverte a ver. Otra vez mujer. Para verte a ti. Para verte a ti. Pobre tierra dormida, duramente abatida por la luz del sol. Por ahí cruces. Para verte a ti. 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 Para verte a ti.
¡Vamos, vaya! ¡Bimbarabimba! 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 ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Bimbarabimba! 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 ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Bimbarabimba! 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 ¡Vaya! ¡Bimbarabimba! 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 ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Bimbarabimba! 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 ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama! ¡Eh, mama!
¡Mama, que negro estará bien, tú quieres ver ya conmigo, me dice lo a mi papá! ¡Mama, yo me acuerdo tranquila, me arrojo pie en cabeza y el negro me deja! ¡Mama, que será lo que quiere el negro! ¡Mama, que será lo que quiere el negro! ¡Mama, que será lo que quiere el negro! ¡Mama, que será lo que quiere! 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 ¡Mama, que será lo que quiere!
¿Y cómo se siente? Venga, baile, 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 baile. Mira, yo quiero que todos bailen familia porque esta es la última. Si no bailan ahora, no vamos a bailar. ¡Por un peligro! ¡Ya un peligro a la redera! ¿Y cómo se siente?
Canadá, verdad. Canadá, verdad.
¡Cada vez más!
I love the music of fire. Now we're on the road to the wild. I say. I say. Sound your ears, don't need to worry.
I'm getting sick and tired of all this crap that's going on. You know what I mean? At the side. The culture of the club is a vibe that I love. It's a drug that I need. It's my music therapy. It doesn't matter how old you are. You can be young, you can be old. The club life is forever, yo. It's a place where you can let loose, shake off all that negativity that's holding you back. You came here just to dance to the beat and rhyme, open up your mind. And if you don't know what to do, just dance all night long, cheer your hips to the break of dawn, at the side. I'm getting sick and tired of all this crap that's going on. I'm not into this to press up a mass amount of records. I'm not into this to be traveling around the motherfucking world. I'm not into this to press to impress anybody. I'm into this for my own heart and soul. Lot of people, after work you gotta go home, you take a bath. Lot of people go home, you fuck your wife. Lot of people go home, you cut your grass. I go home and I fuck that motherfucking PC all fucking night. Can you stand it?
Nostalgia, definition. A sentimental longing, a wistful affection for the past. Typically for a period or place with happy personal associations. Uh, let's give you a minute. We talking about golden era. A time when things were timeless, yeah. When DJs broke new records. When sounds were first heard. When answers were made. When songs were never forgotten. I wanna go back. When the track from night to day, when the DJ only played, your phones all in your face, I wanna go. When the music set you free, playing all the chavas was key, satisfaction guaranteed, I wanna go back. When you remember the track you heard, when you remember the track and the words, way back when you first heard. Check, 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 check your body. Everybody wanna be somebody, no request, add a party, come on.
¡Tachame! 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 ¡Tachame!
¡Ah, ah, ah, Africa, ah, ah, Africa!
¡Ah, ah, ah, Africa!
¡Ah, ah, ah, Africa! ¡Ah, ah, ah, Africa! ¡Ah, ah, ah, Africa! ¡Ah, ah, ah, Africa! ¡Ah, ah, ah, Africa!
Mama's been deep, mama Africa.
No, 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 no.
Mama's been deep, mama Africa.
Motherland. Motherland.
A child is born in a world without unity. He grows into a man trying to do the best he can. But the law of his nation is to take away his dignity, to make him a slave. Your land dying to be free.
Father.
Father, father.
Get free to the motherland.